Player in our efforts to strengthen our ability to fight cyber terrorism, people getting sensitive information out of the county. He had probably the most advanced server or computer system in the county and in order to save all of us money, he has donated his server that we've moved out of the sheriff's office now to the Ringo Telephone Company building next to the courthouse and has made it available for other agencies and departments to now join on board. It's going to save us a ton of money. So Sheriff really has been a team player.
I had no idea you were so tech savvy there Sheriff.
Oh, very dangerous.
Yeah, we appreciate your help on that. So I guess I appreciate you coming. You're welcome to stay or go or whatever you like to do. We'll mow down to the nets and that.
Do any, I wonder if any of the commissioners have any questions?
Oh, I'm sure. I guess I should ask. Y'all got anything?
No.
Mr. Wong, appreciate you coming by. See us.
Yeah, I was in there all day and for a minute. No, I appreciate the presentation and the explanation. I think it did put it out there very well and I think it will, will help in the future or maybe we can keep some, rather than training them and sending them on somewhere else.
Yeah, we spend a lot of money in years just to be a training ground and promote them. Ray, you got anything?
Sheriff, as I said there Sheriff, you know, hopefully we can continue this every year, but it, we will have to look at, you know, year to year, like you agree stuff too. I just, I just want to reiterate that and stuff. Appreciate you going. You do do. Thank you.
Well, Senior. You know, you know, make way can.
Thank you Sheriff. Mr. Goulart, Mr. Woodruff. State Court. Well, come on up.
Yeah, we want to look you right in the eye.
Get close. Come on up here if y'all want. I figured they got them chairs for something. I don't know. It's my first time. I don't know what y'all.
We didn't want to be within arm's reach.
That's why they do double tables. Yeah. I think y'all are going to kind of go over a report of what you're planning on bringing in and hopefully, hopefully not ask for anything new.
I've only asked for an extra $400,000 this year.
You might as well get on out of that chair.
As long as you ask. We can ask for anything, right?
That's right.
So what I've tried to do here is just go back historically and put together actual monies because I think history is the best way to learn. The spike that you see November of 16 was a series of weeks where we did multiple days of court to try to catch up backlog traffic tickets where the clerk had been unable to actually do anything with the tickets because the state court was not yet operational. So I think you should fairly disregard that number, the 71,000 there. From that point, I think you can see what we had hoped would actually happen and that is a gradual uptick in the overall revenue with the last two months being in excess of 50,000. And that's just the county fund. That's ignoring the jail, the local victim assistant monies, drug charges, things of that nature. And so that far left column is the, is the number that I think Carl was most interested in and consequently y'all. There is one other thing that I know the sheriff is interested in that I think although it is an intangible from our budget perspective is a very real savings for the county and that's over in the far right column. I was not able to track specifically prior to May of this year, but I was able to go back and beginning in May, look at May, June, July, and then as of today in August. The number that you see there are actual inmates, so not jail days, but actual inmates who were brought from the jail, who had not posted a bond, but were charged with misdemeanors, who were brought over from the jail and who disposed of their cases early, earlier than they would have had we not specifically brought them to court. As you're aware, we have weekly court on every Thursday morning unless there's, you know, some intervening force and I don't know that we've missed more than a couple of Thursdays since we started. And so for instance, in May, on those Thursdays, we brought over 25 inmates who actually disposed of their cases early. I think a fair daily number is $50 Sheriff, give or take. If you just did one day per inmate, it would be 50 times whatever number you see here. But as I'm sure y'all can imagine, one day is really not inaccurate, although I can't tell you it would have been two, three, five, 10. It certainly would have been more than a day. And so these are very real monies that are saved by our court from the sheriff's perspective, but don't hit our budget. But from a larger societal perspective, these are, these are people that return to their families, people that return to jobs, people that return to being contributing members of society, paying taxes, which, you know, that helps the county. And then in most of these cases, with a very few exceptions, there would have been some sort of a monetary penalty assessed in exchange for them being on probation. So you've got fine monies that, that are coming in, probably not in May for the May numbers, they probably start hitting in July because they're out on probation, then they make their first probation payment, then probation pays 30 days later, then the clerk actually submits it to your fund 30 days after that. So from disposition of a case until the money hits the county coffers is typically 90 days until the first money hit. And most people are not in a position, as most of us would not be, to just pay their fine upfront. And so you actually see a steady influx from any given case that begins to hit the county about 90 days out from when that case is placed on, is disposed of and placed on probation. And then that continues. And so what you're seeing as you look at the left-hand column is this gradual increase as cases are disposed of and begin to get into the pipeline. We had no, I mean, had you asked me in August, when I started working last year, when I thought money would start hitting the county coffers, I would have said no quicker than 30, probably 60, maybe 90. And, but it's a steady increase and there's a trend here. So any, any questions about any of this? I sometimes don't speak clearly.
Doug and I spoke earlier and of course he's saying that at the 50,000, we are currently trading in 600, but he would hope that'd be somewhere between 600 and 750.
That's a hope. I think six, six plus is a safe, very safe estimate. The efficiencies in my office have come up dramatically and of course, like it or not, you're somewhat dependent on my office to actually get cases filed, you know? And so we've had the same sort of a slow uptake because although there were a few cases that came in from the DA's office, for instance, maybe 100 or 200 that came to us from them, ready to go to court, more or less, the vast majority of cases, we've had to actually request incident reports, request videos. This is a process where from the time we try to start opening a case, as we request information, it can be 30 to 60 days on that turnaround. And then it comes back. Well, once it's ready to be accused, you know, the actual formal charging documents drafted, well then it may take me another week or two or three, depending on what's going on, to actually get it drafted and filed. Then it's another week or two for it to actually be arraigned. Most of them do get disposed of at arraignment, but then if they ask for a trial, then it's to the next trial term. So in, in all of the court processes, there is some period of time that in any given case can be, you know, a few days up to six months. And so even from my office perspective, not looking at the money actually, but from my office perspective, getting a case from where it comes to my office until it's ready to actually go to court can take several months. And so we've had this gradual trend and the cases that you see, the monies you see in June and July probably are cases that we filed in March, which are cases that we requested in January. And so what you're beginning to see now is the product of the efficiencies in my office coming up. And, you know, kudos to my staff. They're, they're doing a great job. But I, I think that we're on the, on the trend that we need to be. A couple of numbers about actual cases filed. And this, this will give you a little bit more background into what I'm talking about from my particular office perspective. We utilize a online database tracking program called appropriately Tracker. And it's a, a piece of software that was written by the state, the prosecuting attorney's counsel, and it's provided to us free of charge. You're not having to pay for that. Tech support, everything is provided to us by the prosecuting attorney's counsel. We have opened as of today, I think it was 798 cases that we've opened in my office. And this is not traffic tickets. These are cases where it's either a fingerprintable offense or in those rare cases where someone has a speeding ticket and they want a jury trial. Then it comes over to my office so that we can look at it critically, make sure that it's ready for a jury trial. But we've opened 800 cases in Tracker. Of those 800, we've actually filed 521 accusations this year. So that kind of gives you a feel. We have, what would that be? 279 where we're waiting on information. You know, we've got requests out and, and this is perfectly appropriate that we've gotten that many cases that are, that are in that gap between request, ready, file. It, it's this rolling window that goes with your caseload. And, and so, you know, we're, from my perspective, had you asked me a year ago if we'd be this far, I would have said, eh, maybe. So we're, we're doing better than I had hoped and I'm tickled to death about that.
So, do you want Mr. Chairman? So because this is a, this is a budget hearing, we, we, we got to talk about money. And. You okay Senior Commissioner?
That was the governor. I'll tell him.
So just, just to talk about money for a second, because I've, I've talked to each commissioner individually and I've sort of listened to them as a group and so let me, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but this is where I, this is where I think the commissioners are. So when, when we stood up the state court, there was a lot of uncertainty. You know, we, we hadn't had one before. We didn't know how much it was going to cost. We didn't know which way it was going to go. So what the commissioners did was they took half a million dollars of new money that, that had to come from somewhere, brand new money to start up the state court. And when we look at your budget, we look at the judge's budget, and we look at the, the manning that the clerk of courts has had to hire to run the state court operation for one year, it comes out to roughly right at $500,000. And the commissioners sort of took the approach of, okay, it's our view that the state court needs to, needs to pay for itself. And just since we're just talking about money, needs to pay for itself as we move forward. This, this should not be a money losing venture for the taxpayer. In fact, it should, as you mentioned, as it ramps up, it should be one that where the, the court is self-sustaining and even has the potential to add money to the county. So here we sit after our first year, and I see your figures, and Carl, you, you know what the exact number is, but let's just for the sake of argument say that traffic fines came to you, the probate judge had traffic before you, and let's say that he made $450,000.
If that was money that was generated and paid into state court, that was state court tickets.
Yeah, but it came from traffic prior to this fiscal year.
Well, but that was.
It was monies brought over from prior year.
It wasn't monies brought over from prior.
Hold on just a second. So are we, I think we just may have discovered where there's a disconnect. So you're talking fiscal years that we've not generated a certain amount of money in a fiscal year.
Right.
Not looking at the months we've been in existence as a whole, but looking at a fiscal number. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when did that fiscal year begin, remind me?
October 1.
October 1. And you're saying that the monies that came in from the state court after October 1st, not of, not all of those can be counted?
Should not be because they were collected in prior year and they were set in there as cash bonds until you held your first court date.
And part of that was because we couldn't, because the judge hadn't been sworn and all of that. You know, there was a lot, there was a significant lag time to where we couldn't do anything.
So, so let's, let's then look at, let's exclude October, November, because that's primarily the two months that you're objecting to.
That's, the money was already collected.
And I'm not conceding that, that I agree with your analysis, but those are the two months that you primarily have a problem. Is that correct? The 100 and.
Okay, take that out of the equation then.
Okay.
Roughly $319,000 the rest of the time, all just the county's part.
So what I'm encouraging you as leaders of the county to do is to use the common sense that you were born with and look at the trend. Because there is an, it would have been impossible for us to come in August, September, October, given what we know, and I can tell you as a matter of fact, having practiced law for 21 years, that you don't have a case that comes in and it generates revenue the first month, the second month, the third month, in most cases. I'm asking you to look at the trends of what we are actually producing, even if you ignore those first two months. And I had already suggested that you exclude November because it was an anomaly. It was traffic tickets where we had them waiting that had been backlogged and we did a big push where we were doing traffic course, what, three days a week or something like that? Morning and afternoon.
100 tickets in the morning, 100 tickets in the afternoon. Three times a week.
Right. So if you, if you exclude that and then you start looking at trends, that's all I'm asking you to do. I mean, however you parse the actual numbers, I don't believe that anyone at this table is in a position to say that we are on the wrong track. I mean, if you are, we really need to talk a little more deeply than we have so far. And I, you need to come and sit in my office with me and you need to actually touch the cases the way they have to be touched in order for justice to be served. But the trends are in the right direction. And like I said, if, if you disagree with me on that point, we need to talk a little more or we need to recess this and actually go do some legal work. So y'all know what we're talking about. But I, I mean, I tell you that the trends are in the right direction.
Let me say this too, that notwithstanding the, this large report and its presentation that was made in April of 14 on the creation of state court, they talk about the cost of operating the court and one of those costs is indigent defense cost. If you look at the budget that we currently operate under, there's no, there's no funds whatsoever for indigent defense, none. In this proposed report, they suggested $77,000 is what they projected for indigent defense So in the proposed budget that I submitted, I put in a, at the very bottom, a request for $28,000 to pay for appointed attorneys. And I've got this, here's how I've been trying to deal with it. You may recall, I asked Skip if he could, we've talked about entering into a contract with the public defender's office to represent those individuals in state court that we were unable really to come up with.
Yeah, one more.
So what I did is I continued to appoint lawyers for people who are indigent, who, who do qualify. They fill out the same forms as they fill out for felony cases. And when they qualify, I appoint a lawyer to represent them. There's several lawyers that have agreed to do that. So what I did is I realized I put in the budget I needed, I projected $28,000, but I wanted you to know that I feel pretty comfortable that the county will recoup that. So as you can see with this example, this was just done this week. This is where a lawyer submitted a bill to me and I had asked them whenever they submit a bill, is send a copy of the sentence form or whatever sentence. And you can see that I've ordered in the order as a special condition is that these, that the defendants would repay the county the cost. And you can see it's highlighted, they just on these two that I did this week. So even though it's an increase, I think in the long-term, the county would recoup that. You know, I don't know how much the county, how much the county pays now for that service that you get through the public defender's office, but they're not obligated to represent people in state court. So I, that's one thing I wanted to point out to you is.
Judge, what is this indigent defense here?
Well, they should buy a probate, wouldn't they?
That's, that's brought before probate.
That was, is that on probates?
Yeah, that was.
That would have, that would have been probably Sean Bobble was contracted by the county.
I think he was the prosecutor.
Oh, was he the prosecutor?
He was the prosecutor.
Okay, so then that would have been individuals appointed to represent defendants in that.
Judge, in the, in the, in the budget request that we have here for your office, I do not see currently the $28,000 for.
It's the very bottom. It's not? It's in the very bottom.
Under what category, I'll see.
I combined three, three line items. Let's see here. It would be, it's your line item, let's see here, 52, 1, 2, 3, wait, 52, 1, 2, 3, 0, 52, 1, 2, 1, 0, 52, 3, 6, 8, 0. And it's the very last one in my request.
I don't know if we're going to say anything.
That is that, that's not a request.
I put a little asterisk down there and said county would.
We don't have, we don't have, we don't have, we're looking at.
That's not, that's not the current, that's what the proposed budget that I've sent over when you asked for us to.
Well, that's, that's what we're looking for. We don't, we don't have it in the proposed budget.
That's, that's, that's what they entered in there.
Yeah. So I guess, I guess what I'm saying Judge is.
That document that you have that I gave is what I sent over.
We're going to try to rectify that, but for the purpose of this book that we published, what I want the commissioners to know that it's not captured here. It would be something that you all would have to tell us to add $28,000 to the state court budget as you all have it in front of you. So I don't know where the disconnect was, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, but if, if the judge has asked for $28,000 for indigent defense, we would have to add that line and that would be an additional $28,000 that you don't see on this form. Okay, so that would be something that you would all have, would have to consider just as you are going to need to consider Tracy's request for an additional person. I think that she asked for a full-time person with a salary of $36,400 and depending on what medical plan this person will require, it would be an addition of either between $55,000 and $65,000 per year to her budget. So those I think are really the two issues that they're bringing to you today is that what you don't have in front of you is a request from Judge Goulart for $28,000 for indigent defense and, and Tracy's request for that one person, which would be a salary of $36,400 plus whatever benefits they would have, it would be fallout somewhere between $55,000 and $65,000. That's the decision that you commissioners have to make.
Okay.
I was just wondering, does your copy reflect?
Yeah, it's, it's in our copy, but it's not in this proposed budget. So that, as Jim said, that would be a.
I can't tell you why.
$8,000. Okay. Okay. I just wanted you to see that, you know, that's an expense that was clearly set forth in the proposal.
I'm glad you mentioned it because we wouldn't have known. That's why we're having this workshop.
Yeah, exactly right. But you. He's well below the projected.
I project your recoup. It's sort of like a washout, you're recouped.
It's just adding some new money.
I'm sorry.
We can pull that out of the old money since we don't want to count it. There you go.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just assumed that it was.
Well, you know, the, the, these are, these are, these are the decisions that the commissioners have to make. If you sit, if you sit, if you sit where Carl and I sit, you know, the commissioners asked us to, to watch very closely the $500,000 they put in because they don't want to keep sinking money into state court without some expectation that at some point, they're going to stop putting new general fund money in and the court is going to pay for itself and in fact, return some to us. So the reason for this workshop is just to put it all on the table. And now commissioners, you all have to decide the indigent defense fund and, and Tracy's person. That's clearly where we are.
I think we got enough information. Don't tell them.
May I share one closing number?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
My attorney fee is $300 you got here. What's the chances they would pay it or whatever? And where, and who collects that, where does it go? Because it should show where it would go back to repay the attorney.
Shout out to the county. We do have, we do have in the sheet that I gave you, monies that have been paid back for attorney's fees. I mean, that's, that's what has been done historically.
Some months back.
We get some back. I don't know.
Someone violates.
The balance of the money.
They make a disbursement.
Yes, well, it, the money is collected ultimately by probation and then probation sends that
money to me and they're, under Georgia code, there's a list of how we pay those out. And actually that one's the first one. That's the first item that we pay out is restitution back to the county. That's considered restitution for services rendered for that person having an attorney that we gave.
Did you show it coming back into there for my catch call?
Yeah.
That's all, bro.
You had something to add, sir?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to leave you with a parting number. If you assign an arbitrary three days of jail time saved for every person that we're getting out of jail early, it comes to $80,000 a year, just in that. That will never hit our budget, but I think we can claim that fairly. And if you're going to look the way it seems everyone's looking, I think you need to use the big picture.
I agree.
But of course our sheriff will mix it up with numbers anyway.
Well, that's.
We're controlling what we can control.
We can't control that.
I think state court has done what they're supposed to with the jail rate.
I think they're doing, but I'm just saying.
From the documents that I've seen, do you agree Sheriff? I think our jail population lies elsewhere.
Maybe he can just give us that 80,000, 100,000 a year.
Thank y'all very much.
I do have one last thing. This is a case that has been found, it's in our court of appeals. It's a DeKalb County Recorder's Court where the county got sued for lack of staffing in a clerk's office. And they, they. And they, they found against them, and mainly it was because there were clerical errors for over, understaffing and overworked. And part of that is why I feel like it's a huge deal that you, you give me that, the full-time employee. When we're overworked and we're stretched, you hurry and you tend to make mistakes. Mistakes cause people's license to get suspended. People can lose their jobs. People can sue us for having a suspended license when they shouldn't be. And so, it is a huge deal. It's a huge deal, and lawsuits can happen. And mistakes will inevitably happen if we keep working at the pace we're working. And so, I just want you to consider what cost that would be to the county if we got sued. I don't want to be a part of that. I don't want to be a part of a lawsuit. I, I don't want that to ever happen to us. But I want to make you aware that it's, it's, it's something to consider, and...
Tracy, thank you.
You're welcome.
Judge, thank you very much.
Do we need to, can we be excused or...
Yeah, they say, it's not school, you can go.
But you're in charge.
Thank you for the courtesy, but, oh, yeah, thank y'all very much. Now go make us some money, don't sit around here.
I'll have a drink, sir. So I'm staying.
Judge Johnny, come on up, my friend.
You got nine minutes left.
Huh?
You say...
You know, we've got to move things quickly.
Yeah, I noticed. I don't believe they're very speedy.
Mr. Gass, how are you doing today, sir?
I'm all right, thank you.
All right. Whenever you're ready, my friend.
The, the request that we've got on the table here is that we have reclassed twenty thousand from legal because of the cases that were taken, removed by state court.
Yes.
And the request had been for a part-time person to replace the receptionist that was removed last year, in January of last year.
Yes. Got some num, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I've got some numbers, and I started from January, some comparisons. January through today's date, two thousand sixteen, also the same numbers, and I'm sorry, I don't have copies for everybody, but same numbers for two thousand seventeen. Total, as far as the magistrate court case count goes, we've had an increase in cases per month, every month, January through August, except for April, we're negative thirty, we're down thirty-four, and it's total cases, all the different types of cases that we handle. And we're down ninety in June. But I guess, I guess getting to what Carl just mentioned that I'm requesting for a part-time, I don't have receptions at all up front anymore, and, you know, we, we talked about that last year, and I said I was willing to try that, but it's just not working. Got a bail at that front window, and it's either myself or another employee stopping what they're doing, getting up, and it's, it's non-stop, it's all day long. I try to help as much as I can to keep the clerks from having to stop in the middle of what they're doing, to get up and go deal with whoever, or help whoever is at the window. And I've had to put phones on the robo service, I hate that, I'm getting complaints about that, and I'll change that if I ever get any more help. But it's, it's caused a negative impact on my office, as far as, you know, if you're in the middle of doing something, and, and each case is important to that person that that case is involved, it's a major ordeal in their life, maybe not ours, because we do it every day, but like Tracy said a minute ago, mistakes can be made.
Carl, that, that was in his budget and just, it'd be reallocated, is that correct?
It's budget neutral.
Yeah. And it's included in the proposed budget.
That was legal defense that he doesn't need now because of...
Yeah, that's not, because we have a solicitor. So that twenty thousand dollars is freed up, and so rather than turn it back into the county and have his budget decreased by twenty thousand dollars, he would like to keep that twenty thousand dollars and have a part-time person where he doesn't have one now. So it's really a budget neutral. There's no new money being spent by the county. It's just, it's just changing from one pot to another, and I guess he's just asking you if you'd, if you'll agree to that.
And, and that's, that's correct. And also, I, I just want, I wanted to help the commissioners to be aware that we have not decreased in cases, total case loads.
Through the year.
We've increased, we're down to, or up, I mean, from...
Guess what I was going to add? From January to August, how many cases have y'all did this year in seventeen?
In seventeen? Um, I got it per month, let's see.
What did you add to that?
Two thou, from, from January to August, we've got five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two cases filed so far, with forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight cases still active. That, that bottom number has increased every year. I did, I did a count from two thousand eleven, when I took over, up until this fiscal year, and we've increased as far as still active cases, got twenty-four thousand, two thousand eleven, up to twenty-seven and twelve, thirty-one and thirteen, thirty-four and fourteen, thirty-eight and fifteen, and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight still active as of today.
Wow.
And that's beyond our control. That's just the way the court system works. There's so many different types of cases that we hear, and I've, I've explained that to y'all before.
And what did you say you had this year from...
Thus far, we've got five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two cases filed.
What did you have last year, John?
I'm sorry?
What'd you have last year, do you know?
Uh, yeah, organization here, I'm sorry. From eight twenty-four fifteen to eight twenty-four sixteen, five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine.
Full calendar year.
No, that's from January to August. Yeah. So that's, that's an increase, you know, from fifty-seven, ninety-nine up to...
Fifty-eight.
Yeah. And, you know, the, just for instance, in dispossession, I've had eighty-five dispossession files this month, eighty-five. And it's not, just like Tracy explained, it's not just a simple fact that they come in, they file it, and we take it. There's so much to do with each case. When it's filed, it has to be, it has to be scanned into the system, it has to be assigned a number, it has to be sent out to the sheriff's office for service, and then you have the people come in to file an answer, got a schedule here, and there's, there's a lot that goes in. And that's just dispossession. You know, that's not counting the civil cases, the civil suits that we hear. And I just, I need some help up front, basically.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
How many courts you got now? No good, you know?
One less than I had last year.
I realize that. How many you got now?
And one part-time. I've got, one, two, three, four, I've got three judges other than myself, well, two full-time judges other than myself, one part-time, and I've got four clerks. Take that back, three clerks. Had four.
And this is, this would be a part-time or a full-time?
I, I'll settle for part-time by getting help, but I don't get, it, it's part-time.
I thought you got easier days, don't you?
No, I mean, I got peak hours, but, you know, from the time that the office opens at eight o'clock until, until five, that window stays busy. I mean, it, it's, you know, we're a busy court, just as, I'm not saying we're busier than anybody else, because I don't think it's a competition, but everybody gets sent to the magistrate court to solve their problems, and it's a busy place. And I'm going to give the public, you know, my attention and what they deserve. Somebody wants to come in and talk, and if I can help them, I will. If I can't, we'll explain that. But it's hard for me to do my job with...
Runback court?
Runback court. I've had folks come in and ask me why I'm sitting at the window, why I'm a receptionist. And like I said, I don't, I don't like the, the phone system the way it is. I think the citizens deserve to, if, if it's possible, to be able to talk to somebody, and it's just a mess right now.
Would the twenty thousand cover a full-time person?
No.
No.
It's part-time person.
So that'd be part-time.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I, if I can get that, that sure will help, at least. And, you know, it may be that, it may be that on down the road, we, we have to move, if we get a part-time person, move him to full-time, because this county's not going to get any slower. I mean, the numbers that I gave you, they've increased every year.
Can I get any other questions? Let's go.
All right, Judge, thank you.
Okay, thank y'all, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Judge.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you have any specific query, I'm sorry, Judge, if you have any specific questions for three departments, roads, fire department, for parks and rec, they're here for you all, if you have questions. They're necessarily going to come forward, there's no real issues to be resolved in the budget, but if you just have questions, thanks for...
Thank you, John, thank you very much, sir.
And, you know, if you don't have any questions for them, then we're ready to move on to your call meeting.
Gentlemen, do y'all have anything for those departments?
I don't, they're not real sound.
Yeah, yeah, you, Mr. Chairman, you all asked us to, to, we were committed to rolling the millage right back, and they're running a flat budget, and so the budgets are flat, to include Judge Gass's. I mean, he found the twenty thousand dollar, but it's still going to keep him where he was last year. The only, the only addition that you all have to consider, those that we just spoke about, indigent defense and position for the clerk.
Well, thank you everyone for coming, I appreciate it, and I guess we'll adjourn and move on to our next one.
When will we know that?
Soon.
We, we adopt the budget at nine o'clock on August the thirty-first.
Before then.
Then how will I know? Because the way it is now, it's not in there.
Obviously, we'll probably tell you.
Yeah, we'll tell you, but...
I think I've heard from you every day for a month, I don't guess that's going to change, Tracy.
Because you got it yourself, I'll tell you.
I got a question for you guys. Is this the normal process where we submit, where we, where we request, and then it gets adjusted down before it gets to you? Is that the normal process?
That's my first process.
Well, no, we, we build the budget based on the guidance that they give us, and if there are discrepancies between the budget we build based on their guidance, and other things that you want, like, you know, Tracy's arguing for a person, we built a flat budget, she wants a person. So if you, if next year we say, Commissioner, you've got to build a flat budget, you build it, but you can come yell and scream at Carl, and I, I got to have this, this, and this. It's not for us to adjudicate. They told us to build a flat, a flat budget. You've got to come in here and convince them to give you what you want, beyond what we've...
I'm just trying to understand the process. I do have before here that says for these guys, in case they want to know, the key VP is up, Carl, from what it was last year. Running dates.
It's this way. You, you've lost X amount of money in property tax on automobiles. The vehicles have gone, they buy new vehicles to replace those in some cases. Your TAVT's up, but what the state does is they take, and, and you, you actually do this, you take part of the TAVT money, call it true-up, to bring the property tax back up to what it was at day one. So, so it, it's, when you, it's pretty much balanced out.
Yeah, but I'm just pointing out from last year, one point one three is what we collect currently.
Oh, you're saying the percentage distribution?
Yeah, that's, this is just for counting distribution. That's what I'm talking about.
This is the one that went up in January?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we're up, we've got two more months to collect, and we already exceeded what we were last year, about a hundred thousand. So I expect that to pick up another two or three hundred thousand by the end of the year, physically, on T A D T, than what we expected last year.
Can you write Tracy?
It's going up also.
You're taking out of that.
Are you hearing that?
I said, can you write Tracy?
I was looking at you, Tracy.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about when they're asking...
Tracy, there's your budget.
Well, it's not a whole lot compared to what could happen.
You and I, you and I need to look at, because you're taking, you're seeing the gross TAVT, but you're taking money out of that before you send it to me and call it true-up, replacing the money that you lost in the property tax on automobiles.
That's correct. But in budgeting process, from one year to the next, Carl, I'm saying, last year, we're going to be up at least two hundred thousand. And that's collecting, having handled it up, we're still, we're going to be up.
And we actually projected that in the budget, in the, in the revenue on, in the property tax section.
Well, you don't stick around to this, Sheriff.
We already knew how good you were in the fact that...
Well, Carl's so good, you know, you, you know, that is.
Yeah, we showing the TAVT, we only went a hundred and thirty-six, but at the same time, TAVT, I mean, true-up went up the same amount, so it washed it out. You lost, you lost, I've forgotten how much money, about a hundred and thirty-some odd thousand in automobile property tax. You remember the digester? Went down, washed out all the growth. We ended up with net less than three million dollars of growth for the, for the whole county after we took the loss for the automobiles.
Is that the number three? Is that the number three?
Three million, less than three million was the total net growth in the, in the digest, which generated less, about twenty-eight thousand dollars.
The TAVT is not in that, yes, but...
Right.
Okay.
Tracy, I'm sure the chairman will call you as soon as they make a decision, but I guarantee it'll be before nine o'clock on the thirty-first.
Without a doubt.
Get ready.
Without a doubt.
You can all say it more than that, right?
I'm sure it is.
All right. This time, we're going to call to order our regular meeting. Clark, who would you like to call the roll, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Fisher Cutler?
Here.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Mr. Winer?
Here.
Mr. Law?
Here. And at this time, we're going to go, we do have a motion to go into executive session for personnel leaking.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Clark, did you need to call the roll again?
Is I in for...
Personnel and leaking.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Fisher Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Great, so, I mean, yes.
Can we, Mr. Winer?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
We're in executive session. Thank you all.